Good evening and welcome to the May 17, 2018 City Council Meeting of Claussen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Mayor Protem Matt Albrecht.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we are grateful for your love. We are grateful for the rain that brings new life. We are grateful for this community and the people that make up this community. I ask that you would give safety to our first responders. I ask that you would give wisdom this evening and in the future as we face decisions, I ask that we would do the best thing to help our community flourish, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley.
Here.
Councilmember Eris.
Here.
Councilmember Malone.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is consideration of approving the following consent agenda. On the agenda, the consent agenda are the previous budget workshops.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved as listed.
Support. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Eris.
Yes.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the traffic control order to prohibit tractor-trailer combinations from turning northbound onto Main Street from both eastbound and westbound 14 Mile Road. We have Harry Anderson from our police department to speak of that.
Madam Mayor, members of council, yes, I believe you had my report as well as the TIA report and the recommendation from the Traffic and Safety Board. This issue of semi trucks turning and causing kind of mayhem at the intersection kind of was exacerbated when we put the on-street parking on, on Main Street. We've, if you notice when you're down in the area, the curb is damaged, there's trucks constantly rolling the curb that go, are traveling westbound on 14 Mile Road to northbound, as well as if you're present in the morning hours, especially when you see a semi truck coming eastbound on 14 Mile Road attempting to turn left onto northbound Main Street. If there's a car in the left turn lane, the positioning of, and the lack of an angle to make that turn causes mayhem. TIA did an extensive study on it and recommended that we prohibit the turning of tractor-trailer combinations. Other trucks would be allowed to turn there, like a UPS truck. I've even been told a bus can make the turn. But it's the tractor-trailer combinations and the length thereof that cause problems. So therefore, it's recommended that we pass a traffic control order to prohibit the turning of those tractor-trailer combinations onto northbound Main Street from both eastbound and westbound 14 Mile Road. Part of the traffic control order would also address advanced signage so that we can catch those vehicles as they're coming across from the freeway, which would be, try to get it as east of Stevenson, if possible, and to, so that the trucks can turn north onto Stevenson, or if they pass that, they can get up to Rochester and head north. And then it was also recommended that we have advanced signage to the west of Crooks to allow those trucks to move northbound onto Crooks, so that they're not traveling through our residential areas because they're, they can't turn onto Main Street. So it's my recommendation that we follow the recommendation of TIA, as well as the Traffic and Safety Board, and implement a traffic control order to prohibit those turns.
I had one question, though. The signage that we put up, is that a standard truck driver? Will they know what those signs mean?
You know, I talked to-
Because when I was reading the report, I'm thinking, gosh, is it-
You know, I did talk-
You know, like a yield? We all know what a yield is.
After I, after I got the report, I did some clarifying with Pat Colley, who's the engineer. We're going to try to get signage that is as close to looking like semi trucks, so that it, the picture is delineating that it's for semi trucks and not every other truck that would be able to legally do it. I know if the, if the traffic control order is in place and states that it's the tractor-trailer combinations, which is the official definition in the Motor Vehicle Code, that, that would be how it would be enforced. So it would be education of the officers to know that a standard truck isn't going to be in violation just because it says no truck turns. The traffic control order states tractor-trailer combinations. That's the way it should read, so.
I'm just worried about the confusion in general and-
Mr. Colley said that the signs that are available that are really, that start showing the different trailers deal more with weight limits than with, with the actual delineage of what a truck is. So we're going to do our best to get the closest picture captioning, captioning the trailer combination to kind of make it, bring home the, bring home the idea for those visual learners.
They're not, the tractor-trailer combinations aren't allowed on the side streets anyway, correct? That's at a ticketed item?
Well, they can, they can go down there for certain, it's got to be a certain purpose. Like, if it's somebody that's moving, you know, if there's a purpose, it's got to be a specific designation, and then they have to get off. They can't park them there on the side street. That's a violation, so.
All you need here is no truck trailer turning it right up there in Main Street. That's pretty much all you, all you can do.
Yep.
Because that's the best thing I've seen with, with being in the business a little bit, just no truck trailer turns right.
Are we able to notify, like, the FedEx people and let them know that this change is in place?
I believe Mr. Drinkwine has been already in conversations with them about this. And as I stated in an earlier memo, this is a pretty good timing because it'll, right now that the trucks are already prohibited from turning there. There was talk of Federal Express moving out from, off of, up in Troy. However, I heard that the place that they were moving on Mound Road had fallen through. However, they are still planning on moving from that location. But I've seen Federal Express trucks already taking different routes because of the construction. So it's pretty good timing to have this incorporated with the construction and then just carry on that it would be that. But yes, we can make sure that Federal Express, I'll, I'll check with Mr. Drinkwine. He's been in conversations with them about this whole project. We gave them advance warning for the, for the road construction project, so.
I have two questions. Do you, so do you anticipate officers enforcing this, issuing citations if that-
I would anticipate it, yeah. I would hope, I'd be hopeful and try to put, put that forth to them. Any officer that's there and they witnessed this, it, it really, I'm sure all of you have witnessed it, it is, it causes havoc there when somebody comes there. And the trucks, especially like Councilmember Eris said, those trucks that turn northbound from westbound, they're rolling that curb every time there. And if you've got a pedestrian there on the corner, that's problematic if not for the pedestrian, if they're, you know, I feel bad for these little dogs that are out there that they're walking there, you know, might not be seen if they're, if they're there. But it's definitely hazardous and that would, should hopefully, enforcement of this should cut down on the damage to the curb and disruption of traffic.
My other question, thank you. My other question was, do we have, is there like a standard protocol for communicating these kinds of things to map companies, GPS, you know, Google Maps, Apple?
You know, I'll have to look into that because that would be, education is going to be the best thing with this.
Right.
You know, your local drivers are going to know soon. It's those that are coming out, you know, from out of town making deliveries that, that are going to, you know, make a mistake. And that could, you know, that could always be something that in enforcement actions, that's what officer discretion is, if it's an out-of-town person. But our hope is we're going to have it clearly marked where there's no mistake in, and they can say, oh, I didn't know that. Well, it's clearly marked, just like now, the guys are writing a ton of tickets down there for the prohibited left turns right now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the resolution for the traffic control order number 01-18, which states that no right turn sign for westbound 14 Mile traffic at Main Street and no left turn sign for eastbound 14 Mile traffic at Main Street be installed, with a truck plaque underneath each sign to indicate the prohibiting, the prohibiting of tractor-trailer combination turns, along with the installation of advanced notice signs to the east and west, as stated in the TIA report, to be approved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Eris.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Businesses, by adding a new Article IV, Massage Therapy, providing for the licensing and regulations of such services and businesses and determination of exceptions from such licensing.
Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Businesses, by adding a new Article IV, Massage Therapy, providing for the licensing and regulations of such services and business and determination of exceptions from such licensing be entered into second reading and adopted.
Support. Did you have something to add, Mr. Kingsep?
No, I don't, other than just to brief, and that is that this is a regulation that does exempt massage therapists who've been licensed by the state of Michigan and identifies those, but there are other massage practitioners that don't necessarily go through that, and that covers this as well, as far as the regulation of that and the registration of those kind of businesses.
Thank you for you and Mr. Smith's hard work on that.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Eris.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the reintroduction and first reading of an ordinance to attend the code, excuse me, to amend the Code of Ordinances to create a new Chapter 56, Special Events, Article 1, in general outlining the regulations and application process for permitting the use of public and private property for special events in the city as deemed applicable by the city administrator, administration and/or the city council in providing standards of conduct, application process, exemptions from certain requirements for certain persons or groups, enforcement and appeals, and hearings before the city manager on any denial of a permit. Mr. Kingsep, did you have something to add regarding this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I could. You were profound in the last meeting in addressing some of the rigidity of the subparagaths under 56-3A, and there are eight, nine enumerated provisions, which appear to be a mandatory requirement. And as you opined, there are large events that come in historically to this community where that type of rigidity might not be apparent. So what I did was I restated 56-3 to provide a general statement about the fact that many organizations come to, to this, to this community that have, invite visitors from outside the community. Crowd control in those instances, traffic, individual safety, other considerations are always a concern and cannot be addressed rigidly with some of the requirements in this ordinance. And so if there's a, the standards have to be followed unless there's a demonstrated showing made at the time of the application under 56-4, have a sufficient reason why substantial variance requirements in here can be modified. So it's a modification process, it's not an absolute process. So, so if there is a large organization that you know is coming in, it behooves the organization to really, if they find these regulations to be restrictive, to, to make that approach to the clerk's office on why there ought to be some variance in the application and demonstrate it. That's all they have to do, is demonstrate. And you can do that by any number of things, you know, crowd control. The Fourth of July is excellent. You have, I don't know how many thousands of cars that come into this area, more than any other event. So obviously, there's going to be traffic problems. So that's a primary example of the situation. So that, that addition in 56-3, or restatement, is a flexibility standard. The other one I see is exemptions under 56-5, Subparent 6. And I'm going to read this, and while doing so, prognosticate in my mind why there may be problems. Nonprofit groups and/or organizations that hold annual events and other special events within the community that have a history of not only attracting its residents, but also several visitors from the metropolitan area, that fall under this section, shall be granted a one-time yearly and/or two-day annual maximum special event waiver based upon their 501(c)(3) status, history with the city as a, as a historical event in the city, and as approved by the city council to obtain a waiver of such application and/or fees. Close quote. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you and challenge you. What's, what's the intent of that? What's the real intent and purpose?
The intent for me was to ensure that the Fourth of July celebration, which that organization is a 501(c)(3), the Lions Club is a 501(c)(3), and possibly the PTO or other school events would be able to have some leeway in regard to the special event ordinance.
So that would include John Kingsep's pony-horse carriage carnival ride, which is a 501(c)(3).
I see your point.
Then, my next question is, what is the purpose to be achieved by that that's beneficial to the community? Because you're giving up fees. What, what, what is the need that exists? And why I'm saying this is because if, if you really are insistent upon this, I would reword it, because it's, it's ambiguous now. And I can, I can figure a way to get around it, and I can figure a way to challenge it. And I think what you want to do is make it somewhat clear. You have a conjunctive word in here that you probably should not have, that complicates the situation as well. So that's why I'm asking what the real purpose of this is. And how many organization, and what does that do? How do you verify the 501(c)(3)? It's the clerk that's going to be handling this process. So they've got to get a certification, recent certification, they're a 501(c)(3). But what if they're a subsidiary of a larger organization, a chapter of the American Legion or a chapter of the Elks or whatever? I don't know if they would have the 501(c)(3) as opposed to the national organization's 501(c)(3). So that's what I'm looking at in this. I'm not contesting your, your thoughts and your justification for this, but I want to be sure that if you do have this, you're insulating yourself from a classification claim.
So what if we were to remove the 501(c)(3) criteria and simply make an application process for special events that are exempt, and, you know, if they rise to the level of providing a value to the city or something like that, like the, the Fourth of July, Fourth of July, or the, the-
Car show.
That thing, or the car show, or the Christmas in Claussen thing? So that, so that, I mean, there's a value, as you stated before, it brings a lot of people to the city and is, you know, a good way to, to show the, to show the community to other people. So if there's a sufficient value that can be demonstrated to the city for waiving the permits for those processes, because I know the issue was raised for the Fourth of July because there's so many trucks that would, that come in just for that and would need to be permitted. So if we could have some sort of process to pick specific exempt activities that benefit the city in the long run.
Then we, then we have the risk of arbitrarily selecting something that's important to you or you, and perhaps not to me and the rest of the community, because I'm sure there's a huge constituency that would say Fourth of July activities, as beloved as they are, could end any Fourth of July, so that I can drive up and down my street, right, and not have to worry about fireworks for four days straight or something like that?
Well, that's like anything with the, anything else that comes before the council. It takes the majority vote of the council to pass. So if that, if that permit, permitting needs to be presented to the council with a majority vote to pass.
But let me ask you this question. A 501(c)(3) organization coming in is coming in and providing something that is going to derive some income in most instances, is it not?
And that's, I think, with the, in the Fourth of July instance, that 501(c)(3), the funds that are made that particular day fund the party the following year.
Yeah. And why, where I'm going on that is if you're getting revenue to fund an event later on, then why is it necessary for you to get an exemption?
What, could we just call out our beloved pet projects for now and then have a review process for anything that we may want to add to the list later on?
No, because you don't have a standard on the beloved products or, or organizations.
We can call out existing or past practice.
But that prohibits you from adding new with that?
No, we wouldn't have a prohibition to adding new.
I, I would be hard to define your past practice.
Well, you have to start somewhere, so we will define one, and then we will have one to start with. Simple.
Let me, let me ask this question, and this is not binding at all, but it's just to give me a sense. Would I be correct that the majority of you are in favor of some waiver of a fee under this section of, to 501(c)(3) organizations? Is that a fair statement? The majority of you are-
I don't think they necessarily have to be a 501(c)(3). They could be, they could be a part of that.
Well, and to your point about your horse and carriage thing, I mean, that's a broad brush that we don't necessarily want to paint with.
No, you don't, because, you know, my, my organization is trying to evade, evade high-income taxes. That's why I made myself a 501(c)(3). So, you know, there, there's that, there's always that opportunity. But if the majority of you are in favor of the concept of waiving something with a 501(c)(3), then I'll come back with you regarding something else on this. I think it ought to be definitive now. It should not be just something loosey-goosey that opens the door to a challenge.
What about in lieu of waiving a fee? We only waive a fee if there's an inherent value, and then perhaps a pay forward or something, which would have to be defined. But then you would have a reason for waiving, because I'm really not for waiving many of them.
Let's delve into that a little more. Are there 501(c)(3) organizations that do appear that later on give some benefit back to the city as a result of their participation?
Well, they may not give back to the city, though. They could be, the Lions Club's an example. They don't, they give to a charitable organization.
That's all right. Or, or the, the revenue they get is a demonstrated showing that they give that money to some other cause.
That cause could be your, your horse and carriage thing, though.
That could be. In my big pocket, loose pockets. But, but my, my, my goal in looking at that is the fact that the organization gets the exemption because they participate in the event, they derive revenues from the event, and they demonstrate each year when they apply how much they have given the previous year.
I'm going, I'm going to put a, pose a different question. Is our motivation on creating this ordinance to make money, or is our motivation to do this ordinance so that we can instill standards based on somebody registering? What's the motivation on the special events ordinance? And that, that's, I don't know that, if it's a moneymaker, I'm not looking to make money from an organization that is here doing good works for the benefit of others. And so that, that's, I think, where my core problem with this is. I just, I'm not, I'm not looking for a moneymaker.
So the ordinance itself states the intent. It is the legislative intent of the city council through enactment of this chapter to regulate in an appropriate manner special events, so as to prevent interference with the right of the public to use public property without adhering to regulations and an application process. I think the application fees should cover the cost of processing the application, right? That would be my intent.
Yeah.
I would hate to put ourselves in a position where we are picking winners and losers. It becomes arbitrary quickly, and I just disagree with that. So I think we're in, in some pretty, I don't know what, what fees we intend to charge. I don't know that there's been any hard and fast discussions about that. So, you know, asking a group to pay a nominal application fee, I don't know if that's prohibitive, you know.
So do we allow any trucks that are present at an event that qualifies for the special event usage to be waived for having permitting in the city? So, so if there's an application to be an event that falls into this special event ordinance and they submit their application, do all the trucks that are present in conjunction with that, like the Fourth of July, are waived from being required to have a permit for that period of time? Or, or if the, so if it's more on the event being approved versus the truck owners being approved? So as part of, like, if you get a special event application, you don't have to have a truck fee. All the other ones, all the other days do, but for the special events, they don't have to have a permit or a fee?
And we're crossing over into the mobile, the mobile truck ordinance, right? But, yeah, I don't know, it's a-
They seem that they're somewhat tied together, but-
John, we've been doing, you know, with the car show for 20 years now, and, you know, I have some trucks in there, you know, and, you know, for hot dogs or something. Wherever it's, if I don't have restaurants down the other end, blah, blah, blah. Basically, we charge them like $25 or $50 to be there, and that's it. I mean, nothing else, and they're used to that. So it's not a big deal where we go through the city for this stuff.
Yeah, I, I worry about, I worry about the disparate treatment argument. I, I'm very concerned about that on this. I'm concerned on the food, food trucks as well, and I'll refer to my legal opinion on that. There, there was an out that was given in that, in one of the decisions, but it, it really has to be well thought out, and I'll refer to that when we deal with food trucks. I mean, I can still work on this, but, or there's another, there's another thing you can do is, is adopt this ordinance if you agree to the change that I made in the previous section on the preamble, and then exclude this Item 6. And just let us noodle it and figure out, you know, maybe next year, given the history and what happens, how to address that again. And so you charge whatever fees exist now for the vehicles coming in or for, or whatever your charge is going to be. I think it's going to save time with the clerk's office, quite honestly, as opposed to checking out the verification of the 501(c)(3) or any other charitable designation, for that matter. And that would be my recommendation at this point. I mean, you haven't, you haven't talked about this exemption in previous years. Of course, you haven't had an ordinance like this either in previous years. So deferring it one year, is that really, you know, problematic?
If I recall, there was, there was an urgency for, for Mike.
Yeah, to get this adopted.
It was due to the mobile food truck issues, because they are tied, tied in a sense. Some of the language in the mobile food truck refers to this, because there were going to be, my understanding, exemptions if they're a part of a special event, the fees would be waived because they're basically working under that special event group. That was what I believe, if we get to that ordinance like Matt's saying.
Yeah, you can add it in that ordinance.
Yeah. And the, the basic intent, as, as Councilmember Albrecht stated, is the intent is just to create standards and to have this, because we've had these large events, and some we've had, we have a special event application, some do it, some just do a letter. So I would, as I've come in, I want to create standards, I want to create consistency, and this helps with the standards and the intent. The intent is not to charge exorbitant fees or anything like that, it's just to have standards set forth. So when these large groups want to come, we can say, here's our ordinance, let's meet with whoever that we need to, go to council if we need to, if it, if it doesn't fall within those guidelines.
Is there any idea on the, the fee rate?
There's been no fee right now, so again, as we, in June, when we bring up the fees, that's where we can discuss it. So there's been no fee currently.
Currently, standard is-
But the, the food trucks have fees affiliated with that.
They're going to, yes. This has not been, I guess, flushed out in that sense in what you want to, because I think we, John and I spoke, like, we don't have a current fee, so what would we establish? And that's, that's your, we could set, I could put a nominal amount, you could discuss it at the next meeting in June, and then decide at that point if you want to charge a fee.
And the goal on that is that the fee has a reasonable relationship to the expenses incurred or the charges for which it is paid?
Correct. Just administration costs.
Which can be a plethora, not only the clerks, but law enforcement, cleanup, whatever. But there's that relationship.
I mean, does there have to be a fee for an application? I mean, does there have to be a fee for an application?
I'm thinking $25 for Mike. Mike, your time is invaluable.
No, and that we can, that could be the baseline to start now. Like John said, and like you've stated in past, sometimes you have to crawl a little bit before, using your words. You set it, and you see how it goes, and maybe that works, and maybe you realize next year, maybe 30, 50, whatever it might be, you kind of, you have to set something if you choose to.
Can we, like you say, noodle this, you know?
Sure.
Or do we have, you know, we can work on this?
You, you can adopt this without section six, and, and we can noodle that over the course of X months, and then add that later on if you adopt the activity, if you adopt the ordinance.
Well, it's the purpose of waiting. I mean, I, we might have to wait another meeting or two to figure it out, but why wait months or another year? The same issue's going to come up then, so, and it's going to be the same group. We may as well address it and just get it over with, right?
Well, I guess, yeah, the difficulty is framing the language.
Your wordsmith, come on.
Yeah, I may be a wordsmith, but I always like to have sufficient time to pound on it.
I think you need some time to put the proper words in for it.
Yeah, but not a year? Like, come on.
No, no, not a year.
September kind of time.
Well, that's why I asked before, you know, a census of how many of you are interested in having that provision. And if the majority do not want it, then strike it. If the majority want it, then, okay, we'll try to get it done and have it ready for you at the June meeting.
My motivation is a reasonable fee. That's always my motivation on including that number eight section.
Well, is that the sense of others? Is it everyone gets charged a reasonable fee, whether you're 501(c)(3) or for profit?
I agree with that. A small fee, like $25. Everyone can come up with $25. And it's just skin in the game to show your intent, even if you're in existing.
If so, then you don't need paragraph six. You don't need paragraph six.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion here with an amendment to remove paragraph six.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to create a new chapter 56, Special Events, Article One, in general, outlining the regulations and application process for permitting the use of public and private property for special events in the city as deemed applicable by the city administration and/or the city council, and providing standards of conduct, application process, exemptions from certain requirements for certain persons or groups, enforcement, and appeals in hearings before the city manager on any denial of a permit be entered into first reading and amended to remove 56-56.
Support.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Did I miss number eight? What's eight?
Number nine.
Number nine. Next item on the agenda is consideration of placing delinquent city billings on the July 2018 summer tax roll. This year, the total of the unpaid city billings is $97,392.37. And last year, the total transferred was $170,127.76, which is a great improvement. So, thank you, everybody. And city manager is requesting and recommending that the delinquent city billings totaling $97,392.37 be placed on the July 2018 summer tax roll.
Well, Mayor, I move the list of delinquent city billings be placed on the July 2018 summer tax roll. Support.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the solicitation of public comments on proposed general operating millage rate of 9.9901 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Solicitation of public comments on the proposed general operation millage rate for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I move the adoption of 9.9901 mills as the general operating millage rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Support.
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing soliciting of public comments on the proposed garbage and rubbish collection and disposal millage rate of 1.9976 for the fiscal year of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Solicitation of public comments on the proposed additional garbage and rubbish collection and disposal millage rate of 0.7874 mills. Public discussion is now open. Public discussion is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I move the adoption of, of 0.7874 mills as additional garbage and rubbish collection and disposal service millage rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing solicitation of public comments on the July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 combined city budget. Public discussion is now open. Public discussion is now closed.
Mayor, I move the budgets for the general fund, that's the wrong one, right? General fund, major local street funds, rubbish collection, disposal fund, downtown development authority, library funds, senior citizen housing fund, water and sewer fund, and motor equipment fund for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 be approved as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Okay. So, number 17. As required by the city charter, the combined city budgets are listed for your consideration tonight. The total of all combined city budgets is $15,822,715. I recommend the adoption of the combined city budget for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year.
We just voted on, right?
What?
Is that the one we just voted on?
I think she skipped and wrote that one instead of doing the one before. That's why I got confused.
We're on 18, though.
Okay. I'm confused. Next item was a public hearing, the solicitation of public comments on the July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2023 capital improvement program. Public discussion is now open. Public discussion is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I move the 2018, 2023 capital improvement plan for the city of Clausen be approved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is another part of the budget process, which will require city council approval. It's the adoption of the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement plan. The plan covers the general fund as well as four other funds, which combine to complete the services provided where capital acquisitions are necessary for the city. I recommend the city adopt the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement plan.
Your honor, we just said the same thing, right?
Yes.
Let's do it anyways. Let's just double it. Your honor, I move the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement plan for the city of Clausen be approved. Like, we really want to improve it.
It's, it's already been approved.
More approving, yes. I know, that's what I'm saying. We're double approving it.
Was there a second in that?
It's already, it's already been approved.
So, can I move on to number 20?
There you go.
The next item is a public hearing solicitation of comments on levying 3.9363 mills of additional general operating millage. Public discussion is now open. Public discussion is now closed.
Mayor, I move adoption of 3.9363 mills of additional general operating millage for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
The next item is a public hearing solicitation of public comments of levying 1.9513 mills on both real and personal property throughout the Clausen Downtown Development Authority District. Public discussion is now open. Public discussion is now closed.
Your honor, I move the additional 1.9513 mills be levied for administrative purposes as allowed by state law on both real and personal property throughout the Clausen Downtown Development Authority District for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Are we on 24?
Yes.
My numbers are off. Public hearing, the, of, public hearing is now open to solicit of public comments on levying 1.2289 mills for the Blair Memorial Library for the fiscal year of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Public discussion is now open. Public discussion is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the leveling, leveling of 1.2289 mills for the Blair Memorial Public Library for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
25?
26.
26. Consideration of increasing the monthly rental rates from the Renshaw Senior Apartments effective July 1, 2018.
Madam Mayor, I move the rental rates for the Renshaw Senior Apartments be established at $440 a month for the efficiency apartment and $470 a month for the one-bedroom apartments effective July 1, 2018.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Oh, we have a question?
I have a question. Yeah, Mr. Pollak, just to confirm, this is a, an increase of $10 per month, per unit? Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
No.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consideration of increasing the water consumption rate to $27.40 per 1,000 cubic feet, increasing the sewer consumption rate to $72 per 1,000 cubic feet, and keeping the sewer debt fixed charge at $9, and increasing the billing charge to $18 per quarter for water and $20.10 per sewer effective July 1, 2018.
May I ask a question? If we were not to increase these rates, what would happen?
We would have less revenue, and we would end up with a little larger deficit.
Like, how substantial?
Um, I'd have to calculate it, Paula. I would, I would estimate it would, now, let's figure 3%. Testing my brain math skills. I would estimate it would probably be $70,000 at least.
Seventy, seven, zero?
Yeah.
You did a great job of putting together an informational piece on what the charges are and why, why we bill the way we did. And then additionally, you also did a fine job of decreasing what was going to be a higher increase on these rates. And I just know in talking to people, everyone just gets so annoyed with the whole water sewage thing, because it looks like such a large amount of money for seemingly, I don't want to say nothing, but I think the sewage park gets everyone up in arms. So, would you mind briefly explaining what these charges are for, just so people will feel better when they hear about it?
No, not at all. I did prepare, Councilmember Moffett reminded me that during our workshops, we did talk about trying to be more transparent and give more detail. So, I did do a summary, which I believe Mike did get on social media, I think on Facebook and on the city website. Did you do that, Mike?
Yes, except for five.
It, it really is just kind of a summary of how we pay and who we pay and how the breakdown is calculated. The good news is, as Paula mentioned, we did have a reduction. We just received notice from both SACWA and the SACWA Board and Oakland County through the Water Resource Authority and Great Lakes Water Authority, that there, the amount I had calculated in was estimated to be 4%, but they approved a 1.5% increase. So, we went from having a rate increase of a little over 5% down to 3.5%. And really, there's components in our water and sewer rates that deal with a fixed cost. And what that really means is if, if we didn't have any water go through the system or treat any sewage, we have fixed costs that amount to what those fixed costs are billed for. And, and the, we do bump those up a little bit, because we do have increases in some of our fixed costs on an annual basis. Again, we, I do my best to try and keep those under control. And then the water's generally about a third of the total rate, and the sewers double that to 2/3. And the reason for that is it costs so much more to treat sewage than it does to deliver water. And our pass-through portion, and I tried to break down even by percentage in here, of each section of the rates, our pass-through costs are a pretty high percentage, I believe, in sewer, more so than water. But this is really just our cost to run and maintain the system. The sewage treatment cost, believe it or not, has actually been under control since Great Lakes Water Authority was formed. I know as Councilmember Aris reminds me, every, every year with sewer, is we were getting, you know, we were getting double-digit increases on a regular basis, and the cost was climbing. But the Great Lakes Water Authority has really stepped in and said, look, we, we understand the system services all three counties extensively, and we need to get the rate increases under control. So, they've done that. We've never had a rate increase above 4% after having double digits for years. And this year, with the 1.5% increase, just speaks to how well the authority's working. And, and like I say, the, the majority of the bill that you pay is sewage treatment. And one of the questions we get a lot is, why do I pay sewer on the rate of water that I use? Because not all of my water runs through the sewer system. And the reason for that is, is that is how the billing is set up. We pay sewer based on water, and residents pay sewer based on water. But the reality is, the calculation of our sewer rate, there's measured sewer flow, and each community pays what they determine as a proportion, or a portioned percentage of the sewage that flows through the system as measured. And they, that's part of the adjustment that they make every year. So, they do have a measurement of sewer flow, and our portioned percentage each year is the portion that we pay. But, I mean, if you look at our rate, our rate, sewer consumption rate is $72 or $7.20. I guess that's another thing that confuses some people. I always show the rate in thousand cubic feet, and I actually just found this out today, a thousand, or 100, 100 cubic feet is 748 gallons of water. And we hope at some point we'll actually start billing for gallons as opposed to cubic feet, because it's a lot less confusing for people. But the way our meters are set up and the way the way our meters are set up and the way their meters, SACWA's meters are set up, we pay for, for cubic feet. But the treatment of sewage at $72 for consumption and the delivery of water consumption is $27.40. So it's, it's going to consistently stay that way because it does cost so much for the city to treat that sewage through the Water Resource Commissioner. We're in what's known as the George W. Coon Drain, Drainage District. And we contribute along with 11 other communities to that drainage district. And we're billed based on the, the water that we sell, purchase and sell. So that part of it's not going to change, but it is adjusted for, you know, technically for the actual sewage that's treated. Although that looks, as I said, it looks unfair because you are paying sewage based on your water usage, the actual billing cost does account for the fact that not, we know that not all the water is going into the sewer. But the rate itself, 3.5% is, is good. I know it doesn't sound good, but it is as far as an increase goes. And once again, believe it or not, we lose money on our water and sewer costs every year, our rate. We always have a slight decrease. Generally, it's on the sewer side. But the main reason for that is the massive amount of depreciation we have for our system. We depreciate over $350,000 a year to our system. We have a lot of assets in our water and sewer system. We have, I think, over $8 million, but it's all in the ground. And the depreciation is an 80-year, I think water lines are 50 years and sewer lines are 80 years. So there's a lot of depreciation that gets extended over a long period of time. But, you know, I always wish I could deliver better news every year, but I guess, I guess a 3.5% increase is better than a 5% increase. But, you know, I look forward to the day where I can say our rates are staying the same. I think it's eventually going to happen, especially on the water side, but I don't foresee that happening anytime soon because there is so much maintenance to the Detroit system, which delivers all the water and treats a lot of the sewer, is being maintained, but that cost is being fairly spread now. So the Great Lakes Water Authority has really helped the entire system. I expect that to continue. And again, I expect our increases at least to be moderate, comparatively speaking. But it's, you know, I always look at it as, if you break it down to monthly, $48.83 is the proposed rate per thousand cubic feet. And on average, a, each household member uses about 1,000 cubic feet of water per quarter. So if you took that rate, the 146.50 would be per person per quarter, or 48.83 per person per month. So, and, and for the most part, it's still lower than electric and gas overall, but it just, I think, I think that's what it is, is the, the fact that sewer is so high and continues to be high, but.
Do you know, Mark, how our increase compares to any surrounding cities?
I think the percentage increase, the last time I saw a study, we were, of the Oakland County communities, we were in the top third for rates. But like I say, even being in the top third, we still lose money. Some of the communities have a revenue or a profit in their, in their water and sewer rates and they're able to level, levy less than that, but it just depends on the condition of their system, I think, more than anything. And we have tried hard over the years. I mean, there's a $9 or $3 a month charge for the sewer work that we did back in 2012, which did $4 million worth of work. So I think we're still likely in the top third in Oakland County for overall rate, but the rate increase itself, we're probably, I didn't see what other communities have levied yet or proposed to levy. But I can actually, I'll check on that to see where we're at as far as the percentage increase, but. About 3.5% is, I'll call it manageable. It's not, it's not great, but it's not terrible. And compared to five years ago, it's really good.
Mark, when the George Coon Drain gets paid off, what have we got, three more years?
One more year?
We've got, there was a series of bonds that amounted to close to $10 million over about a eight-year, nine-year period. The final payments on those, which is on taxes now, is in 2028, but the majority of it is paid off in about 2024. The North Arm portion of the drain gets paid off in 2021.
All right.
And those, you're, you're saying those are not included in our water rates?
No, they're not in the water rates. So voters moved, or voted to move those to taxes several years ago. So that's part of the tax bill. And it allows you at least to deduct it for federal income tax purposes. But those, those taxes or those bonds will be paid off in late 2020s. But we do have one coming off, the North Arm Drain, which I've heard affectionately referred to as the Beaumont Drain, that we're a part of, gets paid off in 2021.
I do have one more thing to point out, and we talk about this pretty frequently, but we do have a combined sewer and storm runoff system, which increases the cost. So not only are they treating our sewage, they're treating our storm runoff because it all flows into the same thing. There's nowhere for us to kind of separate that out and, and put it. And it would be a very serious undertaking.
Yeah, it would.
That's prohibitive.
I think they estimated, you know, a billion dollars to separate everyone out and treat it separately. I think Troy is one of the communities in the area that has a separated system, but they started that way. So the anticipation with some of their newer neighborhoods were to us to separate the system. I don't know if all of their system is separated, but a good portion of it is. And it is a way to help control costs, but the investment that we would have to make to separate the system now, not to mention how much we'd have to tear up, you know, new roads and new sidewalks to do it, it's not feasible now. But the hope is, I mean, you can see in the rate, this sewer transport treatment charge is nearly double the sanitary sewage, which to me seems backward. Seems like it would cost more to treat sanitary sewage than it would storm. But the fact that it's a combined system, it's tried to reel in those costs. And like I said, as, as expensive as it is, the Great Lakes Water Authority has helped us do that. Because we, we're now at the table and, you know, the, the consideration is, is although the counties have a stake in this, but we want to make sure that the rate increases are manageable.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion already on this, Mike?
Madam Mayor, I move the new water and sewer rate average of 146.50 per 1,000 cubic feet be approved and become effective for water purchased starting with October 2018 billing cycle.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request from the Claussen Fourth of July Committee to conduct its annual Fourth of July events. I want to share some of the events that are coming up, but I will probably not be voting in this as I am part of the Fourth of July Committee. The festivities start off on June 24th with the annual, gosh, I can't read it, the firecracker, the, the free one-mile fun run, and that's at the park. The ice cream, the Ice Cream Social and Band Concert on June 27th. We have the Kitty Parade on June 30th, along with the Little League Baseball Championship. July 3rd, again, we'll have Arts and Crafts in the Park. And the Midway Games will be happening. And this year new is the Monster Truck Rides that will be happening over at the Shawn Parking Lot. So it's very exciting. And always fireworks at dusk on the Fourth.
Your Honor, I move the request by the Claussen Fourth of July Committee to hold its annual event celebrating the Fourth of July be approved.
Board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
And Mayor Woolley?
We're going to abstain.
Abstain.
The next item on the agenda is the list of bills.
Name of bills?
Support.
Were there any questions on the bills? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have three items. One is listed mobile food vending ordinance. The other is advisory sign policy. And the chief is here, who'll explain that, as will I. And then the last one is body art. And it's used by a different term. What is it?
Microblading.
Yes, that. And we'll talk to you about that. First of all, in connection with food trucks, I gave you, Mike gave you a memo regarding considerations you might look at in discussing this, as well as special events. And then I gave you an opinion about food trucks or disparate treatment of cities. And it's a 1931 decision, a 1934, 1941 decision. They're still good law. And both of those cases put this test forward. And, and when I read it, don't be offended by it because it raises the question of what the heck did they mean? The first consideration in the 1934 case was this. The court, however, referenced a much earlier case as sustaining such a distinction in classification. And that was a situation where a city could, could favor its businesses as opposed to outside businesses. And here was the test. If it were merely an item in general, in a general scheme of city legislation, the whole demonstration, demonstrating uniformity of regulation or reasonliness of classification. More succinctly, one of the other cases mentioned that a court determined they could charge residents and non-residents different rates so long as the residents paid indirect costs the non-residents did not pay. Those, those two statements really mean this. If you want to reduce a license fee for a food truck to Claussen business owners who have that food truck, as opposed to someone from another city, you have to have some fact basis that sets forth a rational justification for that distinction because you incur other expenses in relationship to that event or made to that event. Now let me posit it in this way. If you have food trucks at a park, the question becomes one of, can we charge less of a fee for a Claussen food truck as opposed to one from outside the city? And the rationale might be that the area in which the food trucks are located is one that is maintained by the expense of the city and not a charge to non-residents. In other words, the city maintains the fields, the city maintains the activity, the city maintains enforcement of it, and so forth. And therefore, that ought to allow some distinction to a local food truck vendor. That's my interpretation of what the court meant in those two cases. You've got to have some other tie bar that impacts you, that doesn't impact an outsider. And that way you can then argue you are not favoring a local business. You're giving them the benefit because of other things that are assumed. So i- if you were to decide that a license fee would be reduced as to food trucks, Claussen food trucks, and inserted that in the ordinance, I would suggest that you insert as well the rationale behind the justification for that. The language exempting veterans honorably discharged as it is should remain as it is and not have any distinction other than they're a veteran who was honorably discharged. And that's it. Because how can you create a distinction that says you don't charge a Claussen veteran, but you charge a Madison Heights veteran? It's a little more difficult there. So that is, that is it. Now, it's a dicey area. It's, it's new from the standpoint of trying to figure out a justification that you have that should favor a reduced fee. And I'm not saying an absence of a fee, but a reduced fee for a Claussen food truck, licensed food truck. And the reason I'm saying a reduced fee is there ought to be some fee. That gives you the argument, you're not totally giving them a gratis ride. So that's how I look at that in connection with this. If you decide to go forward and want that consideration in the ordinance, we'll, we'll get that done and present it to you with a rationale and then you can look at it.
So the library charges a fee to non-residents, right? And programming at Hunter, I want to say from a long time ago, has non-resident and resident fees on some things. I've spent a long time.
If the li, the library has affiliations with other libraries, and so if they're a member of another library in the consortium, there's not a fee.
Are you saying it's restricted to businesses? Because the city of Troy charges for their fitness center a resident and non-resident fee?
I, a lawyer is always cautious in how he gives his opinion. And my opinion is tied to food trucks right now.
Well, so, so the court cases that you cited, were the court cases speaking specifically to businesses?
Their businesses.
So is that?
Food businesses.
Food trucks?
Retailers.
So that's the criteria for differentiating rates between residents and non-residents is within a business context?
That's true. But there are other types of distinctions that can be made too with a different rationale outside of the food. This was a food situation.
So we just cited a bunch of this?
And you got to look, you have to look, the test is, you have to look at, what are the unique considerations that apply to your residents that allow them to have a reduced rate that does not apply to non-residents?
Would the simple case that they pay local taxes and outside ones don't? So that we've already collected some sort of fee, you know, for being part of the city, they're already invested? I mean, would that be sufficient?
I'm not going to say that.
Yeah, because then do we have to verify that they actually pay their taxes? Because, you know, we have people that don't, so.
Eventually, they pay them. Yeah, I don't want, I don't.
Tier, right?
And I'm not being coy, but this is a real sensitive area. And I don't want to go beyond what the discussion is right now. Because there can be distinctions you can find that are different in other types of situations that are non-food.
I don't think we're asking you go beyond. We're asking how to appropriately interpret and apply it to the case at hand, though. I mean, you, you listed this court case as evidence of perhaps we need to reconsider resident versus non-resident. And we're just trying to understand, you know, why that would apply when we readily know other instances where there's resident versus non-resident. So we're just trying to understand from a layperson's perspective, how to apply this court case to the issue at hand.
John, is it, are you saying that as long as we have a fee for both, whether one is nominal or not, they can, there can be a different tier? There just can't be an exception to a fee?
Yeah, I would, I would argue that you have a different tier.
Okay, that's easy.
Again, I, I'm going to argue for simplicity. These fees are nominal as they, as we have them proposed.
I think very realistically, though, that we know a lot of the businesses, especially the, you know, the restaurant businesses in city, in the city have very strong feelings about, well, no, we allow food trucks. And so trying to make a special accommodation for them or treat them disparately to their favor is an attempt to sort of, you know, call some of that pushback on implementing ordinances.
And, yeah, I just disagree.
Disagree with?
Trying to set up some kind of tiered or disparate fee structure for Claussen businesses.
We were trying to allow some people no fees, right? We had discussed zero fees for some people. So is that where we are? Or did we move past that?
I'm suggesting you not.
Right, that's because that's the whole issue.
I'm suggesting there be a different fee charge to the Claussen resident as opposed to the non-resident, rather than just a free ride.
Right, that's what I was.
And I'm suggesting doing away with that altogether and just charging the same fee at all, regardless of address.
You know, a sagacious lawyer would say, you know, this is a business decision, not illegal. But let's get down to practicality. It really is a legal issue.
Okay, so I'm going to muddy the waters some more.
Okay.
Okay.
So the Fourth of July special event has multiple food truck vendors as part of the event. Is every one of those food truck vendors that comes from wherever, that the Fourth of July committee goes through and makes sure, what is their responsibility to the city? Are they each one of those trucks going to have to come in and pay $25 per truck? Are they going, each one of those trucks going to have to fill out a form? Or is it by owner, by organization, by, because there's probably 30 different vendors, well, 30 different trucks that may be only 10 vendors over there? And how does the Fourth of July event impact the vendors that the Fourth of July committee brings in?
Section, the B, that responds to that.
The special event?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So then the special event?
If you liked that reading, we tried to create.
We pushed that off, that's why, so.
Can you read that, Mike?
The city of Clausen recognizes that as many active non, this is when we still kept 501s in there, active nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations that hold annual events and other special events within the community that have a history of not only attracting its residents, but also several visitors from the metropolitan area. Therefore, and to the extent practicable, required application and payment of fees to the city clerks shall not be required since the mobile food vendor is, are required to register and pay fees to the organization while acting under the auspices of the special event or organization holding said event while following their standards of operation as well as the special events ordinance.
Thank you.
So we think that would address those larger, which is why they're kind of tied to each other, special events in this one, in that regard, when there's a large event and mobile food trucks. Same with cinnamon in the street, car show, and all those other major events.
And that was not a paragraph that we removed, or it was the paragraph we removed?
That was what John and I added.
It was left in.
Okay, that's how it was. Thank you.
Yeah, the first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need something from us, Mr. Kingsup, as a result of this conversation?
That's within your purview. It's either a motion, or it's sayonara, or?
Or it's just a, do you want it to come forth at the next June meeting for a first reading?
Can I ask one more question about, since we're talking about this? Can I talk about A? I read this, and I was like, what the? The policy of this ordinance is to encourage diversity in cuisine sold from a mobile food vending unit. In addition, the intention is to further encourage diversity of different food offerings from other cultures around the world, and in the process, promote and encourage the different cultures and traditional food offerings. Why? Just wondering, why?
No, I.
Because it makes it sound like we're doing.
No, I, yeah.
I know there's a reason, that's why I'm asking why.
No, I added it just as an example of trying to make the distinction. But, you know, the more I thought about it, the less I thought of its positive nature.
Thank you for agreeing with me.
For once?
I mean, it's clever and creative, but I don't feel that it would be necessary. And it's almost, it almost paints a picture that you have to be something exotic in order to meet the criteria, which is not the whole idea, right? We're like, bring us your fried foods, and we'll be happy.
Plain cheese pizza, we're down.
Excellent observation.
Thank you. I'm good at observations. I often try to keep them to myself.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
So do we want the mobile food ordinance to be placed on the agenda for the next?
Yes, please. I would.
Next meeting.
So if administration could take care of that, that would be great.
You want to be here, will you?
Yeah, I'll be back.
Anything else, Mr. Kingsup?
Yes, I do have some, the chief forwarded something to me today, and it's a, it's an advisory sign policy, and I'll let him also explain, he did a great job in investigating this. And this was precipitated by an individual who is legally blind, and she wanted a sort of a visibly impaired sign around her house so people would be aware of her situation. And expanded into more signs that might deal with specifically other disabilities. And I'll have the chief explain, but TIA has indicated there's really no enforcement measure on these signs. And you have to look at the public purpose, the rationale behind it, the level of protection that you're providing, the duration. There's no enforcement mechanism for a violation of those. So there are those considerations that come into play. But I bring this to your attention to determine whether you want us to draft a policy for your consideration, if you feel that's necessary. And then the chief and I could submit it to you at the appropriate time. Now, I don't know if the chief has anything else to add to this, but it was a great report and quite thorough.
Madam Mayor, members of council, yes, this, the resident, I believe some of you have been copied on the resident that sent this request. She came before the Traffic and Safety Board requesting these signs, and Mr. Colley was there. Mr. Colley, who's the traffic engineer from TIA, has a history in Ann Arbor. He used to be the traffic engineer in the city of Ann Arbor. And he explained to us that the city of Ann Arbor has a policy dealing with the signs. And he recommended that before any consideration should be given to an advisory sign of disability such as a blind person area, deaf person in area, autistic child in area. These signs are advisory in nature. There's no, there's nothing that traffic related that you would enforce under. But it would still be installed under a traffic control order advising of what's going on. The problem that I see with these signs is that my fear is that they give the people a false sense of security, that those signs are going to make them safe. This resident actually stated stop sign violations, speeding in the area, people, things that we already have laws for that would make things safe. However, the Traffic and Safety Board thought that it'd be appropriate that for me to come forward to the council to let the council make that decision as far as whether you think these signs are, should be allowed. And if they are, we need, because if one sign's allowed, there's going to be others that come forward requesting the same types of signs. In years past, we've denied the requests, saying, you know, understating those reasons that false sense of security, different things that can already be enforced. However, I did some research and checked with seven different communities in the area to see what they did. Most of them didn't have a formal policy, which Mr. Colley said we should have a formal policy if we were to go forward. Some have age requirements on that, saying that if it's a child that's less, once the child turns 18, the signs would be removed. That's what the city of Troy, Oakland County, Ann Arbor, that's the way they have it. The Traffic and Safety Board members felt that if a policy was set up, it'd look at more of a total picture of the area and the conditions rather than set a certain age for somebody. Because their point was that you have ailing people, as they get older, maybe they'll have other needs. So they talked about age requirements, documentation, if something was going forward, showing a document from a licensed physician saying that they have this ailment, and that that's checked out to make sure that they do have that ailment. A field inspection be made to, if you're going to put the sign up, is the area safe as far as crossings? Are the crosswalks marked properly in the area with the, with nice signs and the curbing proper? So that at least if you're telling these people they're going to be safe because they're, because they have a sign that said there's a blind person area, make the area safe for them. At least make sure that the signage is proper. And then they also had a recommendation that there'd be a follow-up in that policy that would say that it would put, that would be put into a file, which would be reviewed every three to five years to see if the sign was still needed. If the sign was not needed any longer, it could be then taken down. So I guess I look at it as, you know, it's, and it's going to be a call for council, whether there could be a lot of signs requested for this. And in a day and age where we have a lot of signs around already, so anyhow, I sent that report to John to kind of noodle and see what his suggestions were legally wise. But I guess if the policy, even if the follow-up formal policy was that no signs were allowed, that could be, that's what, the city of Huntington Woods does not allow these signs. That's one of the cities that was checked. City of Berkeley says they allow them, but there's none in the city of Berkeley. So, you know, I don't know what that process is for them. So it goes both, goes both ways, formal policies, no formal policies, and that would be something for council to decide whether, because we do get these requests on a regular basis, and it is important to be consistent with the message and with declining or accepting those. And if they are accepted, there should be certain regulations set, so.
Mr. Anderson, could we maybe get a copy of that memo?
I sure will. I didn't know John was going to bring it forward tonight. I was just kind of, otherwise I'd have given it to you to.
Sure. I apologize, but I wanted to sort of get a sense and let you be aware of it. But sure, the chief can send that to you. It's very informative, and then you can take it from there on whether you, if you don't want to have a policy, I think it's wise to develop a statement on the rationale on why you do not have that.
Is it a policy or an ordinance?
No, well, that's a good point. It couldn't be an ordinance because it's unenforceable.
Right.
So it would have to be a policy administered by the Traffic and Safety Board, I would think.
Well, it could be a policy like a lot of other policies, just how do you handle that procedure?
Yeah.
When somebody comes forward with that sign request for that advisory sign, how is it handled? If it's like Mr. Kingsup said, if it's, if it's the policy of the city of Clausen is we do not allow those signs because A, B, C, D, then that could be the policy, and that could be how it's addressed. If it's a policy allowing them, then you go through.
Yeah, we'll set up the mechanism for it then.
Was there something different about this resident's request that made you do more investigation, or have it just not come up in a while? It seemed like there was something different about this request.
I, I really, she went to a Traffic and Safety Board meeting, and I was kind of taking direction from the board requesting me to come forward with this.
Okay, so they don't usually go through that avenue? Is that what made it different?
Yeah, they haven't been going through that avenue. Generally, it's a call saying, can we do this, or an email? And in years past, you know, I mean, we've had numerous of these complaints. And then I started looking into it, and I, you know, a lot of the signs you see in surrounding communities are very old signs. They're not, they're not fresh, you know, they're the old paint, the old yellow paint with not reflective, and so they've been up there for a while. So are those from years begone that are still there? I, you know, I'm not sure what the communities in our area surrounding, how, you know, if they don't have a formal policy in place, what's the regulation for removing the signs that are there?
In addition, I'd like to add, there was not a Traffic and Safety Board for a period of time, and then there has been some quorum issues of late, so there wasn't that.
We had a period of about, close to a year that we couldn't have, that we didn't have membership.
So there wasn't a vehicle for this individual to go and speak in front of?
And I do have a very active group on this, this Traffic and Safety Board, and, you know, and they requested that I come forward with this. So that's why I wanted Mr. Kingsup to kind of noodle it and see what he had to say about this, so.
Just one other question. So given the explanations you gave this resident about how they're ineffective and the concerns about them, was there something that she expressed, or the resident expressed in particular that, why they wanted to continue to pursue their desire to have a sign up, or?
She said that she had support of her neighbors that think that she should be safe in the area. I think, I think these signs become more of a, more of a political sign, or like kind of a community.
Railing around the resident or something?
If they want to rally around them, and of course, everybody wants their neighbors to be safe. And if you have a person that's, you know, going in this moving, digressing in their state of vision, so that they're now using, she's been trained with a white cane, which there's even laws on the book that says that you have, it's a misdemeanor to not yield to a person with a white cane. So those, those laws are in place. This one, really, the rally point is, is that I told her the reasons that it's, was generally not found effective, and she told me she saw studies that were contrary to that, that said that there's not enough information known on those studies. I'm going on information that I get from traffic engineers. So, you know, I just think it's a, it would be something that would be worthy of council consideration to get maybe a feel for whether you want these signs or not. If so, if we could have direction for a policy to handle the way we process these requests. So if it is a rally deal, you know, is it, is it a rally point where a bunch of neighbors want this person to have a sign, then it might be something that has some merit. So that's why, that's why I'm providing the information I am.
Chief, I want to thank you very much for, ever since we started on this thing, when I turned everything over to you, you did a wonderful job. And as far as talking to the lady who I know is blind, and you did a great job. At this point, I know, I was in traffic safety 30 years ago, and I know what, we went through all the stuff with the signs. At this point, instead of, you know, just dilly-dallying around, I say just give her, put a sign up or two, whatever we need to do, and make her, the resident feel better, the neighborhood feel better, and see how that works. And then we need to start doing some policy changing, and, well, John just loves this stuff.
As nice as that sounds, and I get that, as nice as that sounds, and as, you know, community friendly as that sounds, I don't think we should do that without having a policy because for every one person who spoke up, there's 10 people who haven't.
Right.
And so, you know, especially if there was an email in the past six months when we said, no, we don't do that, you know, then I think that we need to proceed very cautiously. And if we want to do something, then go ahead and move forward with establishing that policy and quickly, as quickly as possible, so that we can, you know, address it whatever way we're going to address it. But we shouldn't, I get the empathy for that, but I don't think it's prudent.
How many requests have you, I know you probably don't keep track, but what's the likelihood of the number of requests? And then type, like, what are they asking for?
It's been, it's been a long time since I've had a request, and it was, it was a, I can think of a deaf child in area and an autistic child in area sign that was put up. But, you know, you're talking about a residential area that people, people have, should be driving cautiously to expect any, any child that's in the area. So, you know, if you're, if you're putting a sign out that says that, it's, you're saying things that should, they should already be doing. You know, the people driving through a residential street, I don't know about you, but I drive probably 15 miles an hour in a, because I'm ready for a kid to come darting out in front of me from behind a parked car. So you should be driving cautiously in a residential section, expecting a kid to be out on a bike, expecting a kid to be running out in front of you chasing a ball, or things that kids do when they're not, when they're just being kids, you know, and not thinking. So, you know, under those logics, and that's, that's the biggest fear that I have, is that you install these signs and people think that, these people don't look at stop signs, and they don't care about speed limits.
Right.
Why are they going to look at a blind person in area sign or a deaf child in area because they're ignorant of the law already? So that sign is not going to work for those people. The thing that works for those people is a stop sign, have a directed patrol, and start writing them for stop sign violations, or have a directed patrol and have them, our officers write them for speeding in the area. You know, deal with those issues with that. And, you know, and encourage the people like this resident who has gone through the leader dog training, she's got her, the white cane training, so she's been taught in that. I get it, too. I mean, I get the empathy for her. She's a really nice lady, you know, and you feel, you feel empathetic for them. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to say, here, put the signs up, this is going to make you safe for those people that are going through the stop signs and speeding in your, in your neighborhood, because that's not going to, that's not going to be effective.
Well, and there's always the pessimistic view that it also points out a vulnerable person on the street, too. I mean, it's like.
There's a, there's a lot of, you know, they. There's, there's a lot of, you know, they-
It does take their, uh, it does take their eyes off the road for a moment to read the sign. Um, and you, you address this a little bit. I, I'm kind of a data guy. I'd love to see the studies on this, so I'm going to do some research to that. And if you have anything that you can give-
How, how forward you, what I have, I, I kind of went through here, but I'll, anything that I can find from, uh, past correspondences and, and different, um, people that have made those decisions in the past.
I too wanted to see the data, but I, sometimes the, the sign overload, people just quit looking at them. I hate to say, you know, I mean, on fourteen mile, we've become, there's so much information when you're driving down fourteen mile with pedestrian crossings, and now we're adding, um, no left truck turns, and just seems like we're inundated with that information. And it may just be noise. I hate to say that, but noise that people don't look at anymore.
Well, and it makes sense that, you know, when I've been told that, uh, that the signs, they, they may be effective when they first go up, but then people get used to them, and they, it's no longer a sign. If you have a new sign with a flag on it, or a brand-new, brand-new yellow sign, they're going, hey, look at that, oh, must be a blind. And then the next, you know, couple of months, they forget about it, and they're still, they're going through the actions that they were before, that this resident's reporting, that they're driving through stop signs, speeding in the neighborhood, and, and there's, there's no enforcement. I mean, you can't, blind person in area, that doesn't say that you can write somebody for careless driving, for violation of the blind person in area sign.
Have we spent any time putting our officers there on a, I'll say, a, a little bit more of a shift rotation to see if you could discourage those in the area by writing some tickets?
This area is a very popular area. It's on West Salford. Um, our guys do a lot, are, are very active over in that area. Um, and, um, they're, they're writing a lot of tickets in that area. Um, I, I did not put them out in directed patrol for this, um, but, it, because I know that they're already very active in that area, running radar, because it's a, it's a cut-through street there. And we've got Shawm Elementary there, and they're just very active in that area.
You could probably do a little PR by just contacting the resident again and letting her know that you do have police actively paying attention. And I live there, so I'm always happy when I see them, because I live on a short street, and I swear, people go thirty for, you know, eight houses. I'm like, why? But, you know, and then you know on Salford is a problem, because parents are buying these signs that say, drive like your kid lives here, you know? It, it, it matters. But if you could just, you know, have a greater presence for a while and contact the resident and tell her that this is how we're going to handle it for the time being, and this is what she needs anyways, and this is the most, this is the best thing we can do for her, is to try and make that area as safe as possible.
Right. Will do. I, I have told her about that, but I'll, I'll really, I've been trying to keep her in the, in the loop of this whole process for, um, for how the, she's been present at a lot of the meetings, so.
Everybody counts, you know? You want every resident to feel like they count, and you want them to think that you are going to take their issue and make it paramount, but you have to do what works best for the city at the same time. But whatever little way we can do to appease someone, I think we should just take the little extra effort and do it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Have a good evening.
The last item is, um, body art or microblading, which is a new form of artistic, um, art on one's body, which is generally permanent. It's colorful. It's, um, actually, it's beautiful. I wonder about the people that get that, though, because it is really astounding. There was an act that was passed, um, three seventy-five, and it's interesting, the purpose for the act was aimed at decreasing the risk of transmission of bloodborne diseases such as hepatitis B, hepatitis C, and human immunodeficiency virus, HIV. It's the first time I've seen an act adopted on tattooing like that. So the question becomes one of whether you want to get into regulation of this. Generally, there are salons that provide this service. It's, it is very regulated, and the act itself refers to the local health department with the authority to really impose, uh, inspections and so forth, which would be the Oakland County Health Department. And I don't know how amenable they would be to action if, if there were problems. But it's something that if you want us to get you further information on really what some of the risks are of this, and what, uh, the interest is in it, we can do it, and then do an analysis and a summary to you of legislation you might want to consider.
What makes this different than our tattoo shops, and how those are regulated within the city? Because we do have one already that does body art.
I know. I, I don't know. Because tattooing is not really referenced in here as much as branding, um, although body piercing, um, and, uh, control, uh, you know, no, basically that. Body art means a location at which an individual gets, performs tattooing, performs branding, performs body piercing. Body piercing is defined, and branding means, branding means a permanent mark made on human tissue by burning with a hydron or other instrument, which is tantalizing in and of itself.
One of the local TV stations did a, um, story recently on this, and, and I think the difference is, is from what I understand, as opposed, I don't know what they do with tattooing, but with this, there's small cuts, and then the ink is made into the small, so it's more invasive into the skin than tattooing is. And that, from the, from this new story, that lends itself to more possibility of infections and that sort of thing.
Generally for eyebrows.
Yeah.
And we, the reason this came up is because we actually have a salon that is opening that, uh, came in and, I believe, wants to do this.
Oh, really?
And that's why I asked the attorney's opinion, because she was asking us, do you have regulations? And I've said, I've never heard of this. Um, and I asked, is there a differentiation between tattooing and microblading? And it doesn't mention that. And then we looked at the state site, and it does specifically say microblading as a part of this public act, and on their website, and that they have to register. There's a list. This business is not on that list yet, but then how do you regulate that? Is it just under the tattoos? Is it a separate?
Is there a license that's issued for this? Is it part of your cosmetology school licensing?
It's part of the body art, but it is a segment, I guess, under that.
Offshoot of it, yeah. I don't know, given the nature of it, though, I don't know if we would have the resources to regulate it, because it seems like there's a lot of health department issues, and proper disposal of equipment, if there's, you know, some, you know, that kind of medical stuff.
That's why we didn't know if we wanted to just-
Why are we even worried about it?
Because there's someone who's asking to open a business, he said.
And because we have regulations on tattoos. So is that, that's where we wanted to say, should we lump them in with that type of regulation?
Is tattoos regulated by the Food Drug Administration? You know, is it the, the health department? Is it the same regulating body for tattoos and this new item?
I know that we have an ordinance, I believe.
Yeah, we have an ordinance, but I don't think, I think it references more the local control. This specifically addresses the local county health department. And all the authority is invested in them. Very little authority in the local, uh, unit.
Maybe we need to look at tweaking that particular ordinance and adding some amendments to include those particulars.
All right, we'll work on that.
As we know, modern practices change, new technology, and this is one of those ones that have come out.
Mr. Smith, you mentioned a public act. Uh, clarify for me what you were speaking of there, I'm sorry.
The public act three seventy-five that Mr. Kingsup stated.
Okay, gotcha.
That's what we both looked at, and we were trying to read through it really fast.
Right. Okay, we'll get, we'll get on that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That's all I have.
She's applauding at the quality, not the intensity.
Mr. Pollak?
I just had two items. The first one, um, I hope will be important to a lot of the residents that have had issues with DTE. We did get a telephone number, a toll-free number that is going to be checked regularly. Uh, it is, I believe we have it on the website, and we can put it on Facebook as well, but it's eight seven seven five nine one six nine six zero. And Mr. Palchesco informed me that this is a Claussen-only phone number. They are, we've got their attention because they, uh, Mr. Palchesco talked to Mr., with, with Mr. Drinkwine recently, because he's in the area that had another outage recently. And, uh, they did say that they had a meeting with significant higher-ups, and Claussen was on the top of the list, because they realize there are an inordinate number of outages in Claussen. So we're, we are part of their focus, so the, the complaining is getting their attention. Uh, I would encourage anyone that wishes to call this number to call it, uh, report the issues you're having. Uh, I would leave your address, and they can check. But they did say it would be forwarded to the appropriate group for follow-up. Um, we did have an excellent letter from a resident. Ms. Shaki's, uh, email was forwarded to supervisors. I hope they've contacted her, and she happens to be watching. In fact, I'll follow up via email. If they have not reached out to her yet, um, I will follow up as well. And we do have residents that I know have been calling the, the toll-free number that they have that they have no luck with. But this is supposed to address that, and I really hope it will. Um, Mr. Palchesco did say he would not attend the council meeting, but he did say he would stay consistently on top of this. He assured me that DTE cares greatly about the issues they're having here, and that they will stay on this until it is resolved. So, uh, I would encourage anyone that's having issues to call that number. I'll repeat it one more time. It's eight seven seven five nine one six nine six zero. Um, so please call and leave your messages. And then another note is, we did get the numbers from our SACRA board meeting this week. Since September, uh, Claussen recycling is up thirty-three percent, which is very impressive. So the carts continue to work, um, are continuing to work. Some of the issues we had recently with our pickup is yard waste, because of the construction and the issue they've had with so much yard waste, because rain came very late, uh, was they're getting, getting the pickup done extremely late. But if it's out there on Wednesday, leave it, and they will get it. And, uh, I think in, in communities that, I want to say Royal Oak, they were, they were still picking up yard waste after ten o'clock in the evening. So, uh, Trangali will come through and pick it up. They're having issues with their drop-off, which is why they're so late, and then just the sheer volume. Uh, they have the split trucks now, and I know people are still concerned that they're, either their yard waste, or their recycling's getting dumped into, uh, the rubbish truck. They do have split trucks now that, that separate that, so that is not happening. Um, but the yard waste portion, I guess reduces, if there's a split one, reduces the amount of, uh, of truck that they actually have to put it in. But, um, yeah, the anticipation was with the rain this weekend, maybe less people cleaned up, so this week they'll be on time. But they're going to try and, uh, continue to keep up with yard waste, and hopefully the volume will drop off some. But, uh, those are some of the more recent issues. But, again, the good news being that recycling is up significantly in Claussen. We are on one of the higher ends in the SACRA community as far as increase from September to April, so please keep up the good work.
Mr. Pollak, I, um, please express to Mr. Palchesco my disappointment in his refusal to attend a council meeting. Uh, I might be alone in that, but I don't think so.
Unless he's quickly going to resolve this within the next thirty days.
As all safety, I think he's smart enough to-
Could have an officer here.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Pollak this evening? Okay, the next item on the agenda is our new city clerk's report.
Good evening. Um, I have a couple things for you. Uh, first, I would like to state that, uh, June first is your deadline to get your dog license. We are definitely trying to push that out, because June second, the prices will go up, and we will hear quite a many residents come in and talk about that. We did receive a letter from Oakland County, and they might very well choose us again for the census, so we never know, until the summer help goes around, and then we start to see all of the residents come in and talk about those exorbitant fees that go up from Oakland County. We are merely selling Oakland County licenses. That is what we try to state. We get, I think it's about a dollar, a dollar fifty per license, so we only get about, what, ten percent of the fee for dealing with all of the, um, the wonderful comments that we get. So, uh, please get those before, so we don't have to deal with that. Get your dogs licensed. Uh, voter registration deadline is July ninth, and I can't believe we're already thinking about this, but AV ballots will be here on or around June twenty-third. So, uh, we'll be sending out notifications in June about that, and actually, as well as sending out the AV applications to those that are on the permanent list, uh, in June, so we can start to process those. I can't believe we already are thinking about that. But there we are. Uh, as Mr. Pollak had stated, we do have the information for the water and sewer rates on the news, on the website. Uh, Victoria shared it on Facebook and other social media. Um, we do have the DTE info out there as well. And again, if anything, if you have any idea, or questions, concerns, any things that you want on the website, please let me know. We'll get it out there. Uh, we are in, always in need, as all communities are, for precinct inspectors, so we're always willing to take on new people to work for us. Uh, it's a great experience to work that day for us. You have training before, we make sure everyone's trained. So if anyone is willing to work that day, please apply. Stop on in, we have the application on the website. Welcome all newcomers, because we like to transition people each election to, to really get those people out there. Uh, I do have a question about the joint workshop. Is it still on? And do we have an agenda for the May twenty-ninth meeting?
The agenda's coming, but we're still on as far as I know.
Okay, Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, seven PM?
Seven PM.
Okay, PC, ZBA, and city council. Okay, a question has come up regarding, there's been three issues. Uh, in my time, it's never been discussed, but I know residents numerous times have discussed it, if there's any consensus feelings about looking at the chicken ordinance. Um, it has come up. We've had residents come in talking about that. I know it's a hot button either way, but we didn't know if you wanted to bring that up as a discussion at some point in the future.
As it stands right now, are they prohibited, or are they not allowed?
We don't have large enough lots. It's five hundred feet, I believe, right now, and there's not enough space right now.
I was going to say, the current ordinance states that the, like, your chickens have to be housed five hundred feet from the nearest property line, which I don't think there's a property in Claussen that-
So it's, you know, other cities, of course, over the years have passed things, and it, every year it comes up, but we've had a couple residents that have asked about it again. So we didn't know if it's something you'd entertain discussing or all, we just wanted to bring it up and see.
Is there, do, do we know, was that five hundred feet based on some sort of data, or is there some sort of data-driven way we could make a decision?
Well, before my time, I don't know.
Well, but I believe that, that they were allowed for a period of time, and then it changed within not too long ago, if I'm not-
Really?
Somebody had said that to me. I, I haven't looked at it.
I think our animal ordinances are way back in the thir- thirties or something like that. I recall this, years ago, we went into this, and it's-
I'd like to look at it, I think, because I know people who may or may not.
Yeah, we know of some residents that may or may not have them currently, so, we know.
I think it's worth looking at.
The other thing is, uh, the burden ordinance, burn ordinance has come back up with code enforcement and other issues with that, if you want to reevaluate that, because we posted on there that we've had a lot of residents that didn't realize you had to pay the ten dollar fee, and then all of the requirements of that, and kind of looking at that ordinance again. Those questions have come up again. You know, once you kind of publish size it, get it more out there, then more questions start to come. So, didn't know if you wanted to look at that again.
Do we have any instances of people being ticketed, or fined, or cited for not having the permit?
We did have some offenses, but they were handled informally. Um-
They were let, they let them burn?
They were either too close, or they let it burn, uh, without attending it. And we monitored those situations with, through the police department, I think, uh, to bring it to the attention of the owner. But I got a call from the code enforcement officer today indicating that we now are faced with situations of fires in the front lawn.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted, if you want to look at that.
Yeah, and, and so I indicated, gather the information on how much of a problem you're experiencing, uh, both from the number of fires in the front yard, purpose, so forth, and the smoke intrusion on neighbors, or in the surrounding area from those fires, just so we get an idea of what the frequency is and what the situation is, so it can be considered intelligently. But that is not uncommon just to this area. It is in other areas as well, cities. That seems to be the thing now.
Devil's advocate. In their backyard is essentially the front yard of the people behind you. So-
Right.
The, your, your front yard, I guess, it just bothers different neighbors depending on where you burn it.
Right.
This one.
No, that's right.
Thought about it, yeah.
And then the third issue that was just brought up, and I don't know if- And then the third issue that was just brought up, and I don't know if it was simply handled within, was about the golfing at the park.
Yeah. I've talked to Kathy Leenhouse on that, and I told her first, I hope they retrieve the golf balls that were hit into the park, see if they were in good condition. But anyway, we talked about the ordinance and the Parks and Rec Board and some further discussions, because when I looked at the ordinance on the prohibitions, it seems to be somewhat antiquated, and if we could do it in a more simple manner, where we develop a policy by examples only, that these activities shall not be allowed in the park, and then, and then the Parks and Rec Board could sort of develop the list, that would be the list posted in the park and what could be done, what couldn't be done, you wouldn't have to amend the ordinance all the time. But the other thought that came for discussion that Kathy is going to have with, with the Parks and Rec Board, is maybe giving a couple consideration of having a couple of the attendants given the authority to issue citations. Because right now, there's a lack of seriousness by people who are confronted with violations, sending a mixed message to the attendant, that sort of this is not serious, when in point of fact it is. And so if we can get on board through Parks and Rec to maybe make that recommendation to administration, as well as the recommendation of changing the ordinance to make it more, more of an active document, that doesn't have to be amended all the time, that's where we're going to proceed. So she's going to get with them, and then we'll get back with me.
I thought we talked about, and we're looking at giving the attendants that ability for dogs running without leeches, people not picking up the dog excrement in the park.
If so, I don't know if, how privy I was to that, but it certainly is more of an issue now, particularly with the dogs. And so if we can start in that area, I think that would be a way to do it. But let the Parks and Rec Board, you know, go through the discussion of it, and then give their recommendation back, because that park is, I mean, a fantastic destination spot, and I think the visitors to it should not be faced with these intrusions that are really uncommon to that situation.
Okay. And then the last item before you, after my memo and my resolution as part of this wonderful learning process. John and I spoke to the Attorney General, and the language that I submitted on May 1st, we talked a lot about things, and I didn't have some of the information that I wish I had prior to submitting it before you, that there was some, many years of, I guess, discussion and things that we didn't have. So their advisement was to provide a rescission resolution, to rescind that, and then move forward. We had a great discussion with the Attorney, Assistant Attorney General, and he advised us quite well with how to rewrite some of the language to really make it clear and concise, more so than what we kind of had. So I need to have a resolution to rescind the motion from May 1st, to consider it for further action at a later date, to put those charter amendments on the November 6th ballot.
Right. What the game plan is, if you adopt the resolution to rescind, that will be forwarded by Mike to the AG's office, to the governor, so they have, you know, the information's rescinded. And then, in the immediate future, we'll send the proposed language informally to the AG, just to eyeball and mark up and send back to us, and then it will be changed. 18.1 is an example. It is, the text is truncated and contradictory, and that could probably be called down to about two decent-sized paragraphs rather than this one lengthy paragraph. And that's what you're looking at, is to simplify the language, so the voter understands it, number one, and it's relevant to today's affairs. So that will be the process. They'll informally eyeball what we send to them. They'll send their comments back. We then go through the formal process with you, and then the submission. It has to be done before August to be on the November ballot. He also mentioned to us that is a common practice and their preference, that charter changes be submitted in a November election as opposed to an August primary. And, and so we're going to follow that, that practice. At some point in time, you may have to consider whether you appoint a charter commission to review your entire charter. That is a very lengthy process. It is a very complicated process, and it really does require lawyers who've gone through that process at length to assist you in that.
Mr. Smith, do you need a resolution this evening, then?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I move that the resolution of rescission regarding the action previously authorized on May 1st be adopted.
Board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is all, aside from, I will be on vacation, and Victoria will be filling in for me over the next week and a half.
Enjoy your time away. One thing, which you may be able to speak of it more than I, but I wanted to let people know that they can register to vote in the primary in August if they're, even if they're 17, if they're going to be 18 by the November election. So if you're currently 17 and you are going to be 18 by November's election, please come in and register early so that you can be a part of the August primaries.
Yes, and that is very helpful, especially if you're going to be away at school or away on a job somewhere, because we need to have you register in person in order to get an absentee ballot, if you're going to be out of the community on Election Day in November. So that is very helpful, until they pass the law in the state legislature where, you know, right now, yes, you need to register in person to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And the next item is unfinished business and new business. Well, I wanted to, I believe it's this, the 19th, is still, you still have time to go to Jimmy John's City of Claussen Youth Assistant Baseball Evening. That's this Saturday. And then following day is Flower Day at the Park. I'll make sure you go there and get your flowers and see what vendors are available there. In addition, the Acting Out Kids Community Theater, they're still doing their Friday workshops from 7:00 to 9:00, and it's $10 per child for each workshop. So make sure that you check that out. We will have a Memorial Day observance at the gazebo on Memorial Day, the 28th, at 10:00 AM, and someone from the Legion will be there, and so please come and show your respect. All the Boy Scouts as well will be there to show our respect for those that have served for us. And as Mr. Smith mentioned, there's a joint workshop that is open to the public, that's at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 29th. I think that's all I had. Anyone else? Okay. I guess it's public discussion. The floor is open. Anyone? Okay. Public discussion is now closed.
Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.